... This is Robinson, Ms. Robinson, notify the public with a notice of the date, time, and location of the meeting. To the extent known, this provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in a following manner: Number one, by posting such notice on the public announcement board of the Lakewood Board of Education and the Lakewood Township Municipal Building; number two, by emailing such notice to the office of the Atrey Park Press; number three, by filing such notice with the Board Secretary; and four, by mailing such notice to all individuals who requested and paid for a copy of same. I want to take a roll call. Dean Jackson?
Present.
Oshie Newhouse? Oshie Raisick?
Here.
Roberto Rodriguez? Mr. Benzian? Mrs. Larkin? Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender? Here. I'd like to get a motion. Should we move into the technical session?
Motion.
One second. The Board of Education, as I'd like to go to closed session, may discuss one of the following matters: Complimental to federal state law or rule of conduct, which would impair the rights to receive government funds, unwarranted evasion of people's privacy, collective bargain agreements, purchase, lease, and acquisition of real estate investment, any tactics or techniques utilized in protecting safety and property of the public, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation other than stated in number four, involving the appointment, appointment, termination of employment, any deliberations occurring every little period. Do I get a motion?
Officer.
I got it. If I'm going to have a roll call, Dean Jackson?
Here.
Would be yes.
Yes.
Newhouse? Oshie Raisick?
Yes.
Roberto Rodriguez? Mr. Trezian? Mrs. Larkin? Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender? Yes. We're going into execu session. Just let the public know that back at seven thirty. Honor of honor.
I've got more tickets for you. I'm not even seeing them. Give one up.
I started the next day. And I have my daughter massage me.
Roll call members come to your front, please. If you would do a roll call, please, if we can ask roll call members to come out, please. If roll calls return to the public meeting, Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Newhouse?
Here.
Mr. Raisick?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Tre- Trezian?
Here.
Mrs. Larkin?
Here.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Bender?
Here.
At this time, we're going to walk over to our little...
Good evening, Senator Singer, Committeeman Miller, and Township Committee. On behalf of the Board of Education, Parents, Students, Staff, and Administration, I would like to thank Senator Singer, Committeeman Miller, and Township Committee for their continued support, dedication, and passion for all of the children of Lakewood. Due to your tireless efforts, the students of Lakewood are being afforded the same opportunities as those students in neighboring school district, and for that, we thank you. And...
And I just wanted to say, and I know you have a busy meeting tonight, but I just wanted to share a few brief thoughts with you. First of all, a really shout-out should be to the coaches and the students that didn't let this issue die. When I came here during the summer, I met with you, and you were marching on Trenton, saying, number one, we can't have layoffs of teachers, we need quality education here in Lakewood; number two, we need our sports teams, we need our coaches, we need our young athletes to be part of things. And you know what I was proud to say when I met with the coaches the other day? There were two things that happened. Number one is there were some doubters there, because I made a promise that we were going to find a way to get our physicals done. And, you know, I spoke to Dr. Friedman, and I spoke to you, and you can hear more about it, to Deputy Mayor Miller about it, and Kement has stepped up to the plate to do that. And that's a wonderful thing. Secondly, you know what I was glad to hear about, to me, that was the pride that everyone wanted to hear about, that we're going to have our uniforms for our first day with Manchester. Go Piner!
Dr. Friedman, on behalf of the Board of Education, Parents, Students, Staff, and Administration, I would like to thank you and Kement for providing students of Lakewood School District with free athletic physicals. The parents, the parents of the youth, the community, the community, your commitment to help and support us. We have been committed to helping getting a decent sports program off to a successful start. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to say that as the CEO in charge of the Kement, Community Health Center, we are here to service the community. We were so happy, actually, when we had the opportunity to step forward and to help the children and to help to get the physicals done. I couldn't hurt by myself, I relied on my staff. My staff really stepped forward. I have a doctor who's actually coming in from his vacation to help us to get these physicals done, so that we can get the children on the playing fields and preparing for their games, and I'm sure they can be very successful this year. And we have to be...
Ms. Winters, thank you so much for your congrats. There's thirty seconds or less. I too want to share solidarity and stand together with you. And I must say, when all the students came to Town Ball, and it was amazing, it was really, really beautiful to see. They came together with the coaches, and I've seen some of the coaches, actually, the basketball coach, the football coach, they all come out there. It was really beautiful to stand together in solidarity, and I'm just here, I'll be here for the Township Committee, Mayor Ray Coles, and colleagues, be able to say, we stand with you, and as Senator Singer said, go Piner!
At this time, I'd like to invite Athletic Director, Mr. Correa, to the podium.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to introduce our head coaches, our assistant coaches, and when you're introduced, just come up and have your team come up also. So I'm going to go by our sports, football, for boys soccer, head coach, Eunice John Wright. Assistant coaches, Philip Correa, Edgar Velagos, Oscar Morlano, and Louis Webb. Thank you so much. For girls soccer, head coach, Ty Shelley. Assistant head coach, Kelly Hannah. Assistant coach, Rachel O'Leary. For girls, we come on up, girls soccer. Cross country, Peg and Luke. Assistant by Randy Holmes. Basketball, head coach, Randy Holmes. Field hockey, Rebecca Maravilla. Assistant by Sue Reddigan, Andrea Lee. Girls tennis, Mike Latta. Wrestling head coach, Oscar Morlano. Football, head coach, Alvin Hall. Assistant by Jennifer. Jim Pell, Monty. Volleyball, head coach. And definitely, definitely not last, cheerleading, that's true. All right, real quick, before we get to the cheerleaders, as all educators and communities, we'd like to thank the Board of Education. The Township Committee.
I am good.
Senator Singer?
Thank you.
Superintendent of our winters?
I better go, I'm going to try this now.
And this is Michael Humpel. For their help in education to restore the sports program of Lakewood School District, and we are proud to say, so we could all say this together, Piner's Pride is back! We're here! And now, our cheerleaders are going to perform a cheer for everyone, so I'm going to turn it over to the cheerleaders.
Five, six, seven, eight. Lakewood Piners are here to thank you for all that we do and for all our work, too.
This past week, our advanced placement teachers received professional development training as the district has increased the number of AP classes offered to our students. Lakewood High School currently offers AP Spanish, Calculus, Physics One, Physics Two, AP History, AP History One, English Three, and English Four. If the teachers aren't in attendance, I ask you to stand up when I mention your name. Mr. Lieberman? Mr. Dofo? Mr. Hanley? Ms. Richardson? Uh, Mr. Eldred. At this time, I would like to introduce our 2017-2018 Lakewood School District Leadership Team. At Lakewood High School, we have Principal, Mrs. Marcy Marshall. Assistant Principal, Mr. Doug Riley. Assistant Principal, Mr. Major Pinklin. Assistant Principal, Mr. Owen Bonner. Lakewood Medical School Principal, Mr. Richard Goldstein. Assistant Principal, Mrs. Dawn Harvitz. Assistant Principal, Miss Deb Ralston. Happy early childhood, we have Supervisor, Miss Penny Moses. Princeton Elementary School Principal, Miss Deb Wong. Assistant Principal, Miss Annette Valdenado. At the L G Clark School, we have Principal, Miss Ebony Rivera. Assistant Principal, Miss Rodriguez Jones. We have both preschool principal, Mr. Joel Strofer. Assistant Principal, Miss Jess Ring. Assistant Principal, Mr. Tom Stedt. We have new principal at Pioneer Elementary, Principal, Miss Deb Mazzio. We have new assistant principal, Miss Torey Mostel. At First Street Elementary, we have Principal, Miss Alina Salguero. Assistant Principal, Miss Yvette Cugaro. We have Supervisor of Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, Miss Valga Stein. We have Supervisor of Biblical ESL Education, World Language, and Guidance and Testing, with Tracy Calontonia. We have Supervisor of Title One Instruction and English Language Arts, K to Two, Miss Colva Fizer. We have new Supervisor of Special Services, with Dr. Sharice Anderson. We have Supervisor of Special Education, Mrs. DeBoris Darshesky. Supervisor of Early Childhood Education, again, with Miss Penny Moses. Supervisor of Related Services and IDA, Mrs. Adina Weiss. Supervisor of English Language Arts, for his three to twelve Fine Arts and Social Studies, Mr. Kevin Walter. Supervisor of Villains and Grounds, Mr. Tim Adams. Director of Security, where has Supervisor of Health and Safety Corps, Mr. John Stillwell. Director of Technology, Mrs. James Prochetta. Transportation Manager, Miss Lisa Vargas. And Supervisor of High School, Non-Hopping Nursing and Non-Hopping Technology Tech Boys and Security Grants, Miss Sarah Garfunkel. Thank you. At this time, I would like to thank everyone for coming to tonight's board meeting. At this time, I would like to go back into closed session, so I'd like to thank you for coming.
As superintendent, we interviewed, we interviewed the candidates for the vacancy before we go to closed session.
Why? We gotta wait, that's the way. And we have to wait, that's the way.
We have to wait.
So hold on, who shut down, man? You have to go back into closed session already. You've been here all afternoon.
Yes!
Mr. President, you can do whatever you want, but the public hasn't been here, you shouldn't have adopted this anyway. Why don't you interview the candidates, then allow the public to speak, and then if you are ever going to close session, which is your option, but why don't we do that first?
Yes.
Let's do that first, that makes sense. So, again, I turn this over to you to interview whatever you do here when you interview candidates.
You have two candidates that apply for the, uh, the, uh, the board vacancy, term runs from twelve of eighteen. Uh, the first one we'll interview is Mr. Ekebe.
And, uh, thank you, Board, for, thank you, Mr. Bender, the board.
Actually, through the chair, why don't we position it so in the corner, so the public can hear well, so what's going on. It's not your full, well, gets them to do it. You're doing fine. Why don't, just move it there, so the guests can, want to hear well, so, right? All right. Yeah, sorry, now everyone.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Bender, for the board giving me this opportunity to discuss my candidacy for this vacancy on the board of Lakewood Board of Education. I moved to Lakewood over twenty-five years ago. My family and I moved to the other side of the tracks. Back then, the other side of the tracks was considered a difficult city, how times have changed. Back then, Lakewood was a small town of forty-five thousand people, and had a small-town feeling. I grew up with Lakewood. Over the last twenty-five years, as the town has grown, I have grown. Lakewood has grown from a town into a metropolis, a city with over a hundred thousand people. To illustrate this here back to its growth, today, the population of, of youth under the age of eighteen is over forty-two thousand. This growth is all in a little more than twenty-five years, with amazing growth from the major and great responsibilities. A short while ago, a short while after I graduated high school, I enrolled in OCC and got my associate's degree, all while working to pay for my education. After graduating from OCC, I transferred to Rutgers University. I took out student loans that I am still paying today and got a BA in Political Science. Upon graduation from Rutgers, I attended a small local medical center and got a job in the school for children with an intelligence, and then I got married. Looking to advance, looking to advance, I enrolled in David College. They had a night school program and obtained an MS, a Master's in Special Education, all the while working a full-time job to pay my bills. Today, I'm a certified general education teacher and a teacher, and a certified teacher for students with disabilities, and I'm currently working in Lakewood. Since 2011, I've been working in education. My life experience has taught me many things, many ethics and morals, tolerance, patience, stability, and humility, and never to take anything for granted. Additionally, I've had opportunities in my work and academic background that have helped me to grow in knowledge, awareness, and understanding, which has increased my capabilities as a citizen and individual. Furthermore, I have experienced in a variety of profession, professional settings that have given me the opportunity to work with supervisors and support staff in many diverse areas to execute and complete goals appropriately and efficiently while maintaining a professional working environment. Moreover, I gained a strong understanding of the importance of providing a high-level service and researching a common audience and successfully reaching the needs efficiently and effectively. Lastly, I have successfully worked independently and as part of the team and displayed the ability to adapt quickly and successfully to all challenges that I have confronted. I look forward to combining my experiences and knowledge in this position. I'm confident that I will be an asset to the Board of Lakewood, Lakewood Board of Education.
Thank you.
Second candidate we have is Mr. Kenler.
Evening.
Evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bender, and, uh...
Second candidate we have is Mr. Tendler.
Evening.
Evening. Thank you, Mr. Bender, and Lakewood Board of Education for taking the time now and giving me this opportunity to try to fill the vacancy, which is present on the Board. I as well grew up in the town of Lakewood, going back for about 29 years now. And I've seen it in its infancy where there was very few, the population was not that many, and the needs of the community as well were not as great as they are today. As I have grown, I've seen the township of Lakewood continuing to grow and to the vast and over 100,000 citizens that there are today in this town. I grew up in a home where my parents instilled, and the day themselves dedicated their time and energy to the needs of the community. They instilled a feeling of responsibility for the community. And I believe in growing up in such a home where I've seen my parents as communal leaders, constantly giving up their time and energy to meet the needs of those who are worried, no matter what the background was and who they were. There would have people knocking on our doors, whether it be marital issues, whether it be financial issues, or whether it be for the children. No matter what these were, my parents never turned anyone away. This is the sort of home I grew up in, and this is what I've seen throughout my entire life. This instilled in me a feeling of responsibility and a passion to give back to the community as I've seen in my home. I have, as I grew older, I voluntarily joined a school called Arsenea where I taught at nights. The children who were maybe a bit more educationally challenged in ethics and interpersonal relationships, we had open floor discussions, and we really grew together a lot in that year as I taught my nightly sessions. We became very close to each other, they'd grow tremendously, and I, on a weekly basis, would have them over for supper, myself and my wife would talk to them, whatever was on their mind, and really, I believe, that it turns an impact on the children. I then moved on to do voluntary work in a night program here in Lakewood where I continued to teach on that topic to a group of children where we discussed ethics, interpersonal relationships, moral standards. And they would ask, we would have a very, very in-depth discussion of how to communicate and what's expected of others in life so that it could be successful. This is a passion I have, and I believe this passion, which I obtained from the home I grew up in, really plays itself out in my passion for education where I believe it's the biggest opportunity to really give over to the next generation and give them the resources and the needs they need so that they can fill their potential and allow them to grow in a bigger and a better place so they can become the best they can be. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Then I'll move on.
Thank you.
At this time, the Board President has requested that we add the recognition of the public. I'm gonna remind everybody that there's three minutes, and I will let you know when there's approximately 30 seconds left. The first person is Pastor Glenn Wilson.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
We do have some issues that we want to discuss during tonight, I think it's a light and celebration. And I would like to keep it at that tonight. But I thank everyone that has something to do with getting all of our athletes back. And it is my hope that as far as students here on the high school, so we do have some issues that we want to discuss, and we could do that out of, I don't know, out of other meetings, but tonight, I think it's a good night to just celebrate tonight. Thank you very much.
Dr. Mike Rush.
Good evening. Before I speak, someone asked if they could speak. They did not know that you had to sign up first. The candidate who spoke did not sign up, and the person wanted to ask you if she can speak. Okay, she heard that, so it's good to know. Yeah, I too, I have to follow Pastor Glenn. I came up to say some other things. But because of the young people and the celebration that's going on, I too cannot, will not, say anything damaging, derogatory, or whatever. And by the way, what I will say, that I'm gonna speak to the township. So we may have a diverse Board of Education. The only way that can happen in Lakewood is that the Board members are appointed by the mayor. If that were to happen, we probably could have a more diverse group of people who care about Lakewood. Not that you guys, many of you guys, don't care, but Board should represent what's sitting out there. Okay? And what's in the town. That is no fault of any of yours, so I'm not blaming you. But I know that sometimes districts can be a type-one district or type-two district. We need to be the district that the mayor will appoint, and the mayor say, "I'm gonna have nine members, I'm gonna appoint two of this, two of this, two of this, two of this, and one of this." And that way, we can get on to do what we need to do to make sure all the kids in Lakewood, especially public school kids, are served. I want to thank you guys for allowing this celebration to take place tonight. I felt good seeing the students here, seeing administrators here with their assistants, and this is what we should be doing more of. So thank you, and you will hear my wrath at a later meeting. Thank you.
Times is negative, the minds is a question, a question about safety and the well-being of our students and our athletes. So there has been talk in the community of the protocol of if there's an emergency on the field, that practice in the school is the protocol to call 911 or to call someone internally for situation. Is there a problem with that? So that's my question. What is the protocol for a student, athlete, please, who may get injured on the field or in the building? What is our district protocol? Should the coach just call 911? Should a parent call 911? Well, you have the control of the parents, the parents always call 911. They obviously call 911. So coaches, you hear that, call 911.
Very good.
Thank you.
Cheryl Jackson.
I do want to say thank you to everybody involved with the sports, and again, we still have a lot of respect for you. Thank you for calling me and keeping me up to date with what's going on. I do have a lot of things that I want to say, but I am mindful that there's a lot of kids here, so... This is hard. A safety concern I have is with the weather outside, the thunder and lightning roll. It's a little bit, the athletes must be inside. But apparently, when there's been times to get in touch with Mr. Stillwell, he hasn't been able to be reached. And you ask the other coaches, they also have the same stories about not being able to get into the gym. Basketball, football, track, baseball, soccer, wrestling. I believe even the statement was made that if it's not in the school, he doesn't care. So I just want to know what the regulation is when football's outside, baseball's outside, and thunder and lightning, and they're called to have to go inside, and the facilities are locked, what happens? Or if the person that's supposed to be bringing them in is not available, what happens?
Stillwell would be the one that they would call if we resolved this issue with the coaches, their swipes would be working.
Okay, well, if you go into the swipes, I guess, from what I hear, there's a major problem with the swipes because he's able to cut them on and off whenever he wants.
That actually is not true.
He would say the swipes were working when he knew that they weren't. The volleyball head coach wanted cold practice, and when he got to the school, he couldn't get in. It was approved in school due. The coach had to call the athletic director, and when he came from his house, his swipe didn't work. The team had to wait outside until the parents can come back and pick them up. So we need honesty here. This one honesty, thank you.
Mr. Trichetta, who is the only person who can control the swipes on and off? Can you please tell me that?
That would be me. The one day they couldn't get in, we were doing a massive network upgrade throughout the whole district, so there was some downtime at certain card readers that get you into the buildings. That's all it was.
Thank you, Mr. Trichetta. We have a notice to the staff if there is some system-wide problems going on to notify that expects some sort of glitches in the system. We do that, so everyone is aware that something may happen, and if people, you know, don't contribute, it's something that's...
It's a great idea, Mr. Trichetta. Thank you.
Rosa Rojas?
Good evening, Board of Education and members of the Lakewood community. My name is Rosa Rojas, better known as Rose. I'm a 13-year-old freshman at Lakewood High School. And I know that tonight we wanted to focus on celebration, but I felt like some of the things, they need to be heard. I've spoken to the Board about Lakewood School District issues numerous times. And at the late end of every meeting, you leave a community of people with unanswered questions and hearts full of uncertainty, really. It has come to the point where Lakewood students are being forced to leave for other schools. Lakewood teachers who have dedicated years of their lives to Lakewood's educational system have to reconsider the security of their jobs. So many great teachers that are still working here are battling deplorable conditions. Some are leaving for other districts for new, more secure job opportunities. And the ones that stay must face enormous and constant battle with very low supplies and support. For some teachers, the only reason they're still working here is because they don't have any other work options to put food on the table for their children. Lakewood parents look at the town where they raised their children in pity and disappointment. That's the honest truth of it. And all this boils down at the Board and the state's failure to take action toward this school district's rehabilitation. As of now, the state has yet to provide Lakewood with an adequate funding formula. They have been giving us a short-term solution to a long-term problem and turning the blind eye to Lakewood's issues. If this continues, Lakewood will be in an endless cycle of corruption. The future of our education relies on you. We need options, and we need your help.
Mike Rush?
Good evening, Board. And like the young lady said to the audience, a couple of questions that I have. First of all, to the two candidates that weren't receded up there, hopefully you would take it seriously and not resign in six months. That's what we've seen. We've seen a pattern of members taking the job, and for whatever reasons, it could be family, it could be whatever issues, whatever issues are, you don't stay long. You know, sometimes, we've had, I mean, I'm looking at a couple of board members that I've seen a couple of years. After that, I know it's a real bit, but we get that straight, too. Thanks for staying tonight and listening to the people that are not going into closed session. Because, you know, they're coming here. One good thing, the kids don't have to go to school anymore. But the next time we meet, they will be going into school, so... I too am gonna jump on the same bandwagon as Dr. Rush and Pastor Glenn, even though I'm a little bit more radical in here. I say what's on my mind, but not tonight, we'll leave it like that, thanks.
Thank you. Pamela Mullin?
Mullin?
Pamela. Mullin.
Hi, everyone. I just want to speak on some issues, but I'll wait until the next meeting, because, you know, there are a lot of victims here. We don't want it to get all wild enough, you know? But I just want to tell you, it's about that, I'm a parent of a football player, and I love the boys, it's like they're all my own, but just want to thank you for getting involved with us with the uniform and shoes because it's trying to build their confidence in Lakewood real quick, because it's a fact that you're in there. So thank you.
One quick question, do we get a new athletic trainer? Or we do have one? Do you have to lose that person tonight? Okay, thanks.
Sean Banks?
And Sean Marshall. Again, I want to address you guys tonight. I do want to commend you guys on supporting the athletic program. Me, as a parent, I do have four male boarders. All of them have been related to the school system, well, toward it now, toward graduated, some on the video lectures all the time. I'm passionate about making sure that the kids have an athletic. I'm passionate about making sure the kids are doing something constructive. I would love to see the doors of the gyms open after hours, giving these kids in this town an outlet, something to do and nervous energy, or whatever kind of energy you focus in a popular way. I coached many youth sports, I continue to. I coached baseball, football, basketball. I've seen something in this town where we're shutting doors on kids. It's not right. We need to get these kids indoors, rings or whatever, whatever the rules are. They need to have something positive to do. We don't need to close doors on children at all. I do, I mentioned, I do have athletes. My kids participate in these sports while maintaining high grades. So it is kind of, it's not like their job, it's not their job. There are kids that continue with folk programs and everything like that. I would love to keep the programs going in the town. Pop on the football, we don't have any more. It doesn't seem like we're having baseball either, because the numbers are down or anything like that. Right now, the only thing alive for the kids in the town is school sports. And again, I commend you guys on keeping this program going for all sports for this coming school year. And I'd love to see this continue. So again, my issues, I would love to see these doors stay open, not closed, where these kids have nowhere to go or anything like that. As we know, idle hands give kids in trouble. So if we close doors, we're just giving them another avenue to get in trouble. Thank you.
To the chair.
From a legal perspective, I advise the board and the superintendent for liability purposes, if kids are playing sports, and again, if there's lightning or unexpected weather, there should be access. That is from a legal perspective, because if kids are outside, and I don't care what goes on in other districts, this is Lakewood. And if kids are outside and there are sports that are interrupted, that does happen. They should have access. So that is a legal opinion, which I've already communicated to the board and to the administration. I'm not sure why we don't tell the public this, but there is going to be a training. Cool Dude, no, School Dude. School Dude is the program that allows access. And I don't know exactly how it works, but there will be a training during the first day or one of the days of the teacher returning to school, how to use it. We did meet with all the coaches, and there were several legitimate concerns expressed. From a legal perspective, we cannot have children and coaches outside when they, again, I'm not a weatherman, but that would be an extra charge. But, um, but we could let, you know, we... But from a legal perspective, Ms. Winters has been advised as has the board, and there will be a policy which will be introduced, or not a policy, but the coaches will be advised when they come back from training. They already have this School Dude training, but there will be a market change in the manner. So our students and coaches are, from a legal perspective, that we are protecting them as is our duty when they're on our property. Thank you.
Next is Steve Vanhite.
Good evening, students, parents, educators. Real quick, I know, I think my name was brought up by a parent about a situation that happened in the gymnasium. I was locked out. Yes, I was locked out. Yes, I did get in, and no, we didn't get kicked out. We did practice. So I just wanted to clear that there's no lies going on here. But anyway, that's not what I'm here to talk about. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education, Superintendent Laura Winters, Board Attorney Michael Lenzelbuck, Mayor Coles, and the entire town committee for coming to our help in a time of need. I'm sure every coach has a story about late spring, early summer. All I can do is talk about my early spring, late summer. There was a time when my volleyball team and I, we were finishing up a team camp tournament at Donovan Catholic. And all the uncertainty was all over the newspapers about we weren't gonna have sports. Everybody was getting fired. And I was talking to a division rival, actually. It was the head coach at Jackson Liberty. And we were just talking about Lakewood Athletics and the unknown future of it. I remember talking to this coach, and we were having a back and forth, but in my head, all I was thinking about was that this might be the last time I got to coach that. And that's all I kept thinking about. I was thinking about what I was gonna say when they asked me questions, whether or not we were gonna have sports. What I was gonna say over the fall, when they're in class and we're supposed to be preparing for a game, and I'm just, I'm just their PE teacher now. Because of everybody involved, I don't have to answer those questions. And that's why I'm sitting here happily with my entire program, all thirty-one girls. And in a time where Lakewood, let's be honest, is split between private school kids and public school kids. I feel that my, in particular, family is special. My wife is an adapted phys ed teacher, the only at the Shy School, and we all know about that school. And she loves it there, and I love that she teaches there. And in my house, all Lakewood kids matter. Thank you.
Mr. President, with your permission, somebody has asked to come up that was not on the list.
Judy Singer. I'm a taxpayer in Lakewood. I'm a graduate of Lakewood High School. Former cheerleader, would you believe that? My kids are graduates of also Lakewood High School. So I'm really very upset, and I don't want to take any of your thunder away, for sure. You all deserved it. But there's an article in the paper today, and our discussion has been really very, very strong on this. Um, I have to put my glasses. Michael, I know you since you're four years old. I'm really glad I see, Michael, your salary. You are making more than the President of the United States. Did you realize that, Michael? I'm sure you did. You're no dummy. I know you're not a dummy. But, Michael, photocopies, come on. Get them. Your superintendent? Seventeen percent increase in your salary when I think that your teachers deserve a raise. I am a product of all Lakewood schools. I also worked at Cliff's End Avenue as a parent. I especially, I've done basic skills, I've done ASL. And I have to tell you something. You are very lucky, the teachers that you have and your principals. But to take a seventeen percent increase in your salary, you are at the top of the line. Tell me, where does that, where does that come to figure correctly? It's just, it's very upsetting, because when I hear that your sports programs have been cut, it's very upsetting. I know you got your sports programs back, and I'm really glad for that. But when I see in the newspaper the figures that other people are getting, it's very upsetting. I'm a taxpayer, which means that my taxes are going up. It's not fair. And this state monitor, where do you think for Lakewood? Where do you pay? Where's the other guy who was here? I think he, wait a minute. What's his name? Michael Isara? What happened to him? Sorry, what happened to him? Come on, give me a break.
Thirty seconds.
What have you done for the school? And what are you gonna do for the school system? You know what? I hope that you on the Board of Education will bring some, some sense to this, this education. They're here to stay, and they're not going away. And I hope that you all do a really good job, and you're really conscientious about what you're doing up here. And how you can vote for what you did vote is unconscionable. That's all I have to say. And you know what? Michael, I still love you, but you know what? You can't charge for photocopies.
Mr. President? Ms. Singer, I know for many years, and actually, she lived on the block from me when I was a kid.
Michael?
Wait, wait, we're not...
I have one question. Why was there a police car in front of your house for a week? I want to know, do the taxpayers pay for that? Or do the... I love you too. Or do the Board of Education pay for that? Because the police car had been out there.
Let me answer that. Just let me answer, Singer.
What we can do, Michael?
The police car, actually, it's interesting you bring that up. It has an expired registration on it, and I actually called the township. I wanted to know the same thing. What I have learned is that someone on Chacon, Stevens or Chaconos had a robbery.
Yes, there was a person in the first...
Right, so I asked that the car actually be removed from in front of my house, which it was, and moved anywhere else. So I have the same concern, so good point. But as you know, someone else was robbed, or whatever the word is. I asked for it to be removed in front of my house. As far as being a Lakewood graduate, Ms. Singer, I too am a Lakewood graduate. Nineteen eighty-three, the best to be. As far as your concern of copies, watch this. I'm in a generous mood once again. Despite, and again, even though I sit by the state monitor, I will say this publicly. I am not embarrassed to say that I sponsor the buses to the state. I will go to the state. I will sue the hell out of the state because the state has shortchanged us. And this guy, no disrespect, Mr. Monitor, and the other guy, Mr. Monitor, is not feeling well, which is his right, but he does work many hours, that I know. But they have shortchanged us. These are just, no disrespect. But here, peons in the state, the real people are entrenched who these kids went, and I will do it again and again with my own money, because these guys here, and that's gender neutral, have no say, because they can't make money that doesn't exist. However, what they can do, which as long as I'm here, and please check my contract, that the state rules. I deny. Please check footnote six. It's a footnote. I don't have it in front of me. I posted it on the website the day after I was appointed. But if I feel that this board is violating any child's civil rights, IDA rights, and any others, it's a footnote. The one footnote I inserted, I am out of here. So they are on notice to that. As far as copies, I don't charge for copies. When I sue districts, like every other attorney, I charge for copies. But in this district, I've already made hundreds of copies, and I haven't charged them nor will I. So I appreciate the copy comment, but it is in the contract, which I repeat. There will be a more, how do we say it? Unbiased article tomorrow, where this is not the first time a lawyer has gotten a retainer in this district, I might add. This is the first time, however, that the lawyer actually lives in Lakewood, graduated from Lakewood High School, and I probably, I might be fired again, so I, it's fine that Lakewood public school children come first. Again, I say that when there's no one here. I say that when there is someone here. But the mandate of the Lakewood public schools is to ensure a thorough and efficient education for Lakewood public school students. I don't be clapping, that's the law. As far as non-public students, Ms. Singer, Ms. Singer, say with me. Okay. Non-public students have rights too. Whether they like it or not, those rights are limited. Those rights, I always say, it's like a pot of gold. Once that holds up, it can get more. A public school student, if we have to sell the superintendent's desk, as I say in lectures I give throughout the state, if that child has individual rights, which they do, especially if they're classified, we as a district have to provide for them. I am not at liberty, but I did hear a mother coming up here tonight, and I am not gonna discuss her, because that would be inappropriate. But with her permission, when I called her this week to follow up, it was almost heart rending. It was heart rending, actually, and I thought it was on end, when she said I'm the first person who called her in how many months of her complaining. No, I did not charge for that call, because it's under my retainer. It is not litigation. But regardless, it was, again, and I spoke to the board about this, and Mr. Isara spoke to the board about this, allegedly I wasn't here, that we have to be more consumer-friendly. We have to remember that we are here to service the public school students first. Again, I may not be here by tonight. Glenn, you plan to be there for me if I'm not here after tonight, if I get a call and say I've been terminated? Which is fine, because if you look at my contract, if they do that, they still have to pay. I was smarter this time. But regardless, regardless, there are many issues here that we are, from a legal perspective. I heard another parent get up here tonight and say they don't have uniforms, or they didn't. From a legal perspective, I took the approach that our students have a right to a thorough and efficient education, and that means when they go to sporting events, they don't have to wear schmatz. Let me explain what schmatz are. Rags. They have a right, and we have to find the money. And as to your taxes going up, I say this lovingly. My taxes have been going up too. Unfortunately, my, my, my retainer, I have been told, has been budgeted for, so your taxes are not going up from that. But let's focus on what we're all here for, hopefully, which is to have a thorough and efficient education. As far as the coaches, I'm not gonna get into this issue because I cannot speak about employees. Several employees have been rised this evening, which is the procedure we use, so we can talk about them. They have a choice to be rised and come to the public, as you saw last time, which was what it was. Employees that have been rised tonight that in fact have some involvement, that is, their responsibilities, include some of the issues that were raised tonight, have chosen to have this discussed in closed session. That's the law. I can't change that. What I don't understand, again, Ms. Winters and I speak constantly, I speak to the monitors, we don't always agree, but why are we, but let's get something else out there, and I don't know why it's not. Fred, Mr. Rush, asked about athletic trainer, I think the question was. I wrote it down. So I wrote, I asked, is there an athletic trainer? I was told there is. So why don't we give that information as opposed to this mystery hoopla? So, Ms. Winters, is there an athletic trainer or training company or something, since our athletes, whether they're here or not, I would ask it, but they're here anyway, so why don't the coaches and the athletic director know? Is there a trainer? Or, that's the word, athletic trainer? I only play tennis, and I didn't have an athletic trainer. And obviously, now I'm not in any shape to play anything. So go ahead, Ms. Winters.
We have an athletic trainer through the company SD Game Day.
SD Game Day?
Correct.
What is it?
Are you telling me the athletic trainer doesn't know the athletic, right, 346, is it not?
No, I said the athletic director's here, and I would like everyone to know, because they're asking questions about it. So what is SD Game Day? Maybe Coach, Coach, if you know that is? So would you tell the public, because why does it have to be a mystery about, is there an athletic trainer or not?
I didn't know it was such a mystery.
Well, then, tell them. Tell them, Jill.
Yes, we do have an athletic trainer, and they were from the company, Game Day. Yes, we do have a trainer, athletic trainer. His name is Dylan Harrington, and he's from a company called Game Day. And he is on board as the athletic trainer for all Lakewood sports and business here.
Okay, so look at that. How easy that Fred, you asked, there is an athletic trainer. SD, SD Game Day. Ms. Winters, I have been a proponent of using our website for my MVP, for my contract, for my resolution. Could we put that on the website tomorrow so everyone knows? See, so much of this can be easily solved. Could you put the information? I'm sure the coaches know, don't be yourself. But why doesn't everyone know SD Game Day? Dylan something, I don't know. Judith, Judith. I don't know, but it will be on the website tomorrow. SD Game Day, the athletic director, not the athletic coach, whatever, the trainer. Okay, with that being said, we have done what is right. Again, I may need some assistance after this meeting, but so be it. We have done the public portion despite the initial, we have listened to the public. The public, has everyone been called?
Yes.
Okay, so now, what is your pledge?
I'll make a motion to go to closed session.
Now, let me just say this. There's a new policy, again, as long as I'm here, which could be momentary. If we go into closed session, there may be action taken, because I'm not here to juke the people, because that usually works anyway. There may be action taken. It is now nine oh three. It is now nine oh three on my phone, I don't know if that's accurate. But there have been several employees who have been rised because we have to discuss some of these issues. We can predict, but we cannot guarantee that, um, first of all, I'd like to, with the superintendent's permission, Dr. Anderson, do I know, is Sharice, are you still here? Sharice, the board wanted to meet you in closed session, but with the superintendent's permission, why can't the public meet you together? So, if you would come up to the microphone, if you're comfortable with that. And by the way, the sports team, you could say, but you don't have to feel compelled. Like, we love you're here, but if you need to do what you do and stuff, or do it. But, um.
You missed that, they saved us from the rat?
They saved, no, um, uh, no, no, no. There's no rat, there's just concerns that need to be answered. Uh, there may be some rat, but I don't know. But, Ms. Winters, guys, you don't have to be shy. You're allowed, let's have a, for our sports team. So, Ms. Superintendent, if you would introduce, Sharice, you don't have to shudder that. Mr. Larkin, you're gentle, and could you move that to the side so everyone can? Thank you. Ms. Winters, is your employee, if you would?
I'd like to introduce, this is my candidate for the supervisor of special services, Ms. Sharice, Dr. Sharice Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. It is an honor and a privilege to, uh, take on this task. I have been a big dedicated school social worker for the Lakewood Child Study Team for the past fourteen and a half years. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you to do our best to give an appropriate education for every student in the Lakewood Public School.
Ms. Anderson, I must disclose, uh, I must disclose that we work together in the Strive Program. I must disclose that we actually, I'll never forget, in Rain Tree, when we have kids not attending, we went to some kid's house. Uh, Ms. Anderson has been a dedicated, uh, social worker of Lakewood Schools. Ms. Winters, if you would just explain to the public, cause they have a right to know, um, what the process was, when this process is important. Transparency is more important. Footnotes and contracts are most important. So, if you would explain to the public how you came to this decision, without talking about other employees, of course. Can you just give a little overview of what the process was?
So, I conducted several interviews. Um, I narrowed down to interviews and to other interviews. And I chose Sharice because I felt that Sharice was very familiar with our students, very familiar with Lakewood landscape. And I'm actually very proud to have Sharice as part of our leadership team.
So, the public kind of said it is on the agenda, I think it's page eighteen from memory, if I'm wrong, but it's there. Ms. Anderson, the Board of Education wishes you the best of luck. The lawyer who is responsible to make sure there's a free and appropriate education fate for our public school children is behind you to do what's right. It will be refreshing. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Would you like, I made a motion to go into closed session, I have a second?
Second.
And it's nine oh seven, so I, I can't tell you for sure cause we have other employees we rised regarding some of the concerns you have brought up. We will try to be out. There will be action taken because we have the agenda. So, I don't want anyone to say we didn't. Uh, there will for sure be that action. Um, we will try to be back out by nine thirty, which is twenty-three minutes, but we may not be. We will keep you posted, but thank you. The reason for, the reason, wait a minute. The reason I have to give a legal reason for closed session is to discuss employees who have been rised, to discuss contracts, and to, uh, discuss other legal issues under the sunshine law. Now, you see, that is not a legal question, that is now, that's what we're gonna discuss. I just have a question, cause where's Doctor? Uh, and again, the Doctor, we also know each other, not since age four, you being the Doctor. Um, I'm just a doctor of law. But, um, there was a question you raised which concerns me in a legal basis. I just wanna make sure, and I wanna make sure. Where the, was the position for Board of Education member advertised? Yes, it was, and it was posted. So, I can't hear you, my hearing's gone with age. Okay, so there was appropriate posting. And the newspaper, okay, so, um, there's, is there a motion to go into closed session?
Can I just get a vote on that? There was a motion and there was a second, but I need to take a vote, Thea Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Racing?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Present.
Mrs. Larkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez? Mr. Bender?
Yes.
If we could ask the, um, Board Secretary to call us back into session.
Would you like a motion for to come back out of closed session?
Okay, we're back in, uh, I gotta take a vote? Go ahead.
Uh, Thea Jackson?
Here.
Oh, she do have? Mr. Racing?
Yeah.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Treasure?
Yes.
Mrs. Larkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, Mr. Newhouse was in closed session but had to come home due family concerns, he just left. Okay, Board President, what are, uh, what are we doing next?
There are two, okay. Two candidates on the, uh, agenda for tonight for interviews that were held tonight. Um, does anybody wanna make a motion for appointment?
I wanna make a motion and recommend Ms. Penler.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse absent, Mr. Racing?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Treasure?
Yes.
Mrs. Larkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Congratulations, Mr. Penler. We're not gonna ask, you're gonna be sworn in shortly, but we want to go on the agenda. We're going to, uh, ask you, uh, you can't vote on agenda that obviously you don't know anything about. So, now, well, at least that's legal opinion, you shouldn't do that. So, now we go onward, Mr. Board Secretary.
Sure, at this time, we're, I'm looking to approve the minutes, um, the special meeting minutes on June twenty-seventh.
I had thought you said you're going to approve it. I asked for a motion to approve the entire agenda.
Well, I, I was gonna do the minutes and then the addition.
Fine, fine, I'm sorry.
Okay, wait, this is the, what you're voting on is the special meeting minutes of June twenty-second, public meeting minutes of July nineteenth, public meeting minutes of August ninth, and special meeting minutes of August fourteenth. This is a block vote.
Motion. It's not a block vote, uh, it's a vote on several matters together. Block the votes, okay, so, it is, uh, this, uh, are you saying, what's the date?
June twenty-seventh? That's the date, the special meeting minutes, June twenty-second, twenty-seventh.
June twenty-seventh, July nineteenth, August ninth, and August fourteenth. Is there a motion?
Motion.
I heard, um, Mr. Rodriguez, second. Ada, Ada's second, it's just the.
No, I didn't second, I wanna know, is that the one that the transfers on it?
Now, all it is, is the minutes.
Minutes.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, you said, uh, it's like a second, roll call.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse absent, Mr. Racing?
Yes, except for the nineteenth, we are always absent.
I understand that.
Okay.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Treasure?
Mr. Treasure, except for the meetings you were absent or you're voting on those you were here for?
Yes.
Yes.
His mind too.
Yes, and that will reflect what the board member was not here, or, or vote was for the meetings. Is that, go ahead.
Mrs. Larkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
That passes, is there a motion?
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay.
All right, next we have the, uh, motion to approve the additions to the agenda. That was the sheet that was given out, motion change?
So, just for the benefit of the public, um, that, um, is, uh, addition to the body, the agenda, real numeral eleven and ten, real numeral twelve, eight, twenty-two to thirty-one. And it is two pages and, uh, if, if the board had it in advance, and now that's a motion to add this to the agenda, is that correct?
That's correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Seeing none, that passes. Okay, okay.
Next.
There was a motion, Mr. Rodriguez made the motion, Mrs. Gonzalez. Is that correct, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
This one, that's correct, thank you.
Okay, also, now we have the business portion of the agenda.
Motion, second.
Any questions?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse absent, Mr. Racing?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Treasure?
Yes.
Mrs. Larkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Through the chair, I'll ask the state monitor, if he disagrees with me, but you could move the entire agenda as amended. Uh, Mr. Monitor, do you agree with that? Yes, you can. So, is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Second, Mrs. Gonzalez, thank you, roll call.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Racing?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Treasure?
Yes.
Mrs. Larkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Uh, do we have any committee reports, or anything to report on?
No.
Any communications or correspondence? I don't have any.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to swear in the new.
Please do, if the new board member can come up and. I'm sorry, go ahead. What? We're, we're gonna, uh, through the chair, this term is, I believe, and I can be correct, being. This is through December two thousand and eighteen, is to fill the vacancy of Mr. Ian. Uh, is it, is that correct? Okay, okay, if you would, Ms. Kevin. Mr. Kevin. Jim? Uh, Ms. Winters is asking for a picture of some sort of. Okay, come on.
I say name.
Motion, Penler?
All in favor?
Do solemnly swear my.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Jersey.
The Constitution of the state of Jersey.
I will bear truth, faith, and alliance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and alliance.
The saying of the government established in the United States.
To the saying of the government established in the United States.
In this state.
In this state.
With the authority of the people so helping God. I say name.
I motion, Penler?
I swear.
Do solemnly swear my.
I possess the qualification described by law.
That I possess the qualification described by law. The office of members of the Board of Education.
Not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS nineteen colon four dash one.
And I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to. RS nineteen, colon, four dash one.
And I am not disqualified due to any conviction of crime.
And I am not disqualified due to any conviction of crime. Or an offense listed in.
NJSA.
NJSA.
ATD colon. Twelve dash one.
Twelve dash one.
And I will faithfully.
No, faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Through the chair, uh, or the administration, when is our next regularly scheduled meeting? Does someone do that? Let's get the. September twenty-seven, as of now is your next, no, it's not. One minute, for the public's benefit. When is the next board meeting? As of now, it's September twenty-seven. Uh, it will, the meetings will be held in the comments. If there's any change to that, we will, of course, be notified. Thank you.
Motion, Penler?
Thank you, River. Uh, second, Ms. Ada, thank you. Uh, roll call, uh, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Good night, and don't forget, pineers pride is back, thank you.